Could you go ahead and call this May 6, 2019, meeting of the Whitefish City Council to order? Melissa Hartman and Richard Hildner are excused this evening. And I would like to ask Bridger, would you mind leading us in the pledge tonight? Thanks. Thank you, Bridger. We'll move on to communications from the public. We do have six public hearings scheduled for tonight, so if you're here to comment on a specific public hearing, please wait until I call that specific public hearing, which is under item six on the agenda. But if you have anything to share with the council, now would be your opportunity, unrelated to the public hearings, and your name and address for the record, please, when you approach the podium. Is there any public comment tonight? No. Coming up. Any public comments? Not seeing any. I will stay with the audience. Any volunteer board reports from the audience? How about the council? Andy?
Just one quick one. We had our first meeting with the consulting group that we've hired for the Sustainable Tourism Master Plan. That's Kate McMahon and Lorraine Roach from Hinkston Roach Group, who has done actually work in Whitefish before. She did the public opinion survey in 2001, and they did a conflict resolution group of work here, and I think 2003 or 2004. So, and I'll have a few more comments about that during council comments, but we...
Great. Further board reports from the council? Not seeing any? I'll move on to the consent agenda. Any changes or additions to the April 15, 2019, meeting minutes, or can I have a motion for approval? Frank?
I'm not on yet, but...
I move to approve the consent agenda.
I will second.
Motion has been seconded by Counselor Williams. Further discussion? All those in favor, please raise your hand, and those opposed, like sign. And that motion carries unanimously, Michelle? Which brings us quickly to our six public hearings tonight. And we will begin with item 6A, which is consideration of a request from Sage Partners LLC for a preliminary plat for a six lot subdivision located at 415 and 1/2 Colorado Avenue. And this is on page 153 of your packet. Bailey?
Okay, good evening. So, the applicant is proposing a six lot residential subdivision on a total of 1.74 acres. The subdivision will be comprised of only single-family lots. Growth density of the subdivision is 3.44 dwelling units per acre. The lots range in size from around 6,000 square feet to a little over 12,000 square feet. The lots will be accessed from an internal privately maintained road, which would be accessed from Colorado Avenue, which is a city-maintained road. The subdivision will be required to pay cash in lieu of parkland dedication, and they are requesting two subdivision variances that I'll get into a little bit later. Just as a note, the property was previously approved for a three lot minor subdivision back in October of 2018. If this proposal were to be approved, the three lot subdivision would become void. Montana state law only allows you to have one active preliminary plat at a time, so... So, the property is currently vacant. It is split zoned between the WR3, which is our low-density multifamily residential district, and that's along the southern portion of the property, and then WR2, which is the two-family residential district, and that's located on the northern part of the property. It is surrounded by residential uses with a mixture of WR2 and WR3 zoning in the surrounding area. It would be connected to city services and utilities. We did mail adjacent landowners within 300 feet of the property, since it's a major subdivision, that buffer is bigger. On March 27, we also posted a sign on the property, notified advisory agencies on March 29, and placed a lien in the paper, in the Whitefish Pilot, on April 3. When I wrote the staff report, I had received two comments, and then two more came in after the planning board packet, and then one additional one came in after the planning board meeting, and all of those were able to make it into your packets for this evening. So, I've had no comments since the council packet went out. So, just reviewing the criterion findings of fact, the Whitefish Fire Marshal has reviewed the project for conformance with the city's adopted fire codes. There are, the location of existing hydrants in the area are adequate. There's also an existing hydrant located within the interior of the property, so no additional hydrant installation is required. Lots five and six are required to be sprinkled, as they will be greater than 150 feet away from that existing hydrant on the property. The private road is required to be a minimum 24 feet wide, with at least 20 feet of that width paved, and the remainder a drivable surface, and that will need to be maintained in all seasons to allow for emergency access. The existing private right-of-way is 50 feet wide, and is approximately, 270 feet of that road is currently in place along the property, and that does currently provide access to the lots that are directly to the north as well. One of the variance requests from the applicant is not to install curb and gutter along the internal road, and I'll get into that, the criteria for that in a minute here. Frontage improvements already exist along Colorado Avenue, and no additional improvements are required at this time. The applicant will be required to install improvements along the internal road, including streetlights and sidewalks, although one of the other variances is to only have a sidewalk on one side of the internal road. Since the proposed private road will not be constructed to full city standards, we are requiring a note on the face of the plat that only single-family homes are permitted, and their accessory buildings are permitted on each lot, so no duplexes or multifamily dwellings may be constructed, even though the zoning would allow for those types of uses. The proposed subdivision would generate approximately 60 total daily trips, so that is under our threshold for the traffic impact study requirement. The site is located within our urban area of the Whitefish. There are no mapped crucial wildlife habitat or seasonal migration corridors, according to Fish Wildlife and Parks on the site. This area of town is known for having high groundwater. However, it does depend on specific property locations. They did complete groundwater monitoring in the spring of 2018, and this information was part of that minor subdivision that I mentioned earlier. Further review would be conducted by the Public Works Department during their review of water and sewer connections. And going, tying into that, since the proposed private roadway alone would equal over 5,000 square feet of constructed area, they will have to do an engineered stormwater plan, and obviously the groundwater monitoring will tie into that as well. Preliminary information was submitted regarding the stormwater management and for proposed utility locations, but obviously further review would be required, and also to determine if the stormwater retention could be located within the no-build zone, which is what they're currently showing. But final approval would occur after the preliminary plat was approved and prior to final plat, is when that, and before the utilities would be constructed. City Water Main is currently located within the existing private roadway at the northern end of the property. It does end at that existing fire hydrant that I mentioned. All water facilities would be designed and constructed to city specifications, and would require review and approval by Public Works Department and Montana DEQ. I'm sure people are aware with the article in the paper, but the city of Whitefish is approaching its threshold for water storage and source capacity. We currently do not have DEQ authority to approve projects involving water main extensions or an expansion of current water allocations. Craig can give more information, but I know we are currently working to get DEQ the information and get their response back for that. So, that may be subject to additional review and discussion with DEQ. City Sewer Main is currently located within the existing private roadway as well, and all sewer facilities would be designed and constructed to city specifications. So, the application is required to provide parkland dedication. Since the lots are less than half an acre in size, the calculation is 11% of the net acreage of the subdivision, for a total required parkland amount of a little over 5,000 square feet. And this number could change at the time of final plat, if lots are reduced or things could change in size. Since the required parkland is less than one acre, that's our threshold, the Parks Board has determined they would prefer cash in lieu. And so, that would be paid based off of the final, the approval of the market value of the land at the time of final plat. So, that's why there's no specific number in my staff report. Additionally, there are a large number of mature trees on the property, so we are proposing a condition that they provide a tree retention/preservation plan, and include that with any CCNRs for long-term retention of the trees, compliant with our subdivision regulation The growth policy does identify the parcels as urban on our future land use map, and the text within that classification specifically relates to WLR, WR1, and WR2. Since it's split zoned between that R2 and R3, a portion of it technically doesn't comply with that designation, but since we are conditioning the subdivision to be only single-family permitted out there, then it would be more compatible with that zoning designation, or the growth policy designation. The proposed lots do equal or exceed the minimum lot size for the respective zoning, and it does appear that all setbacks and lot coverage requirements can be met, and that would be confirmed at the time of building permit approval. We are also recommending that Lot 5 be eliminated within the development, and that's due to a section of our zoning regulation that states a flag lot should not be developed adjacent to another flag lot. Lots five and six on their proposed site plan are both considered flag lots under our definition in the zoning, and so one of them needs to be eliminated, or the private road would need to be modified so that they both have direct access in order to have both lots. So, as I said, they are asking for two variances to the subdivision regulations. One is regarding private streets to be constructed to city standards, and the other is requiring sidewalks on both sides of the private road. Standard city right-of-way for a private road is 50 feet, with a minimum asphalt width of 20. They are showing that they can comply with that required right-of-way, because it is 50 feet right now, and they are proposing the minimum of 20 feet wide asphalt, but they're requesting to deviate from the curb and gutter requirement along the private roadway. Instead, they're requesting to use low-impact development, including bio swales and a bio-retention pond. And then finally, their variance request is to only install sidewalk on one side of the internal private road, instead of both sides. So, we reviewed the criteria set forth in our subdivision regulations, that no variance shall be granted unless the conditions are met or found to be not pertinent. I'm just gonna try to hit the highlights of it, because we've got a lot of public hearings tonight, so... I guess the main thing, the property is irregularly shaped. It is considered an infill subdivision, so there is limited room to construct and treat stormwater. Preliminary groundwater monitoring completed with the application did not demonstrate a problem with the surface bio swales or surface groundwater. Obviously, final review of the stormwater management would be completed by Public Works after preliminary plat approval. They are also, the sidewalk installed on one side of the internal road is also due to that reduced right-of-way width, and then the low number of units that would access the internal road. But we are requiring sidewalk along one side, from, all the way from the rear of the property, extending all the way out to Colorado Avenue to provide a safe access for pedestrians. It is not possible to increase the right-of-way further as to a typical road standard, since the access onto Colorado is only 50 feet wide, so they can't make it bigger to a city-street standard. And that, again, limits the adequate space for curb and gutter and sidewalks on both sides, especially with the lots to the north have already been developed in compliance with their required setbacks, so that would also limit, start making them possibly non-conforming with their setbacks as well, if they had to do that. The no-build zone is required as part of a settlement of a lawsuit between two civil property owners. Therefore, it cannot be moved or changed without their agreement, and that does further limit the usable area of the property for roads, stormwater, that kind of thing that pushes that. The request to deviate from the curb and gutter standards and the sidewalk are not based on a financial hardship, as it does have a unique shape and limited areas for stormwater treatment due to the existing conditions created through previous subdivisions, which can't be modified. Approval of variance would not cause a substantial increase in public costs, since the private road already exists for the first 280 feet of the property. Again, it would be completely private, it's not maintained by the city, and it would not ever be able to be maintained from this, by the city, because it doesn't meet our city standards. And then approval of the variance would not place the subdivision in nonconformance with any other adopted regulations or city policies. So, staff did find that the variances, or, excuse me, the conditions for granting relief from, for the variances were met, or not to be, are found to be not pertinent. And we do recommend that the council adopt the staff report in the variances, and recommend that for approval. So, staff showed 26 conditions, proposed conditions, to the planning board. They met on April 18. The applicant was present as well to discuss the projects. There were six members of the public that also commented on the proposal. Concerns that were raised were regarding density with the subdivision and the surrounding area, location of sidewalks, stormwater, character of the surrounding neighborhood, preservation of the trees on the property, and limiting the project to single-family only. Those draft minutes were included as part of your packet. Following the hearing, the planning board did vote three to one to recommend approval of the application and the requested variances. They did make three amendments to the conditions, and I'd just like to outline those for you. I realized during the meeting that my condition 12 and condition 21 were exactly the same, so I, we combined those two together. They wanted to amend condition 16 to read "a five-foot-wide concrete sidewalk, consistent with city of Whitefish sidewalk standards, must be installed." And then the last one was adding a condition 27 to read "the private road must be signed 'no parking on either side for fire purposes.'" But I am happy to answer questions if you have any.
Thanks, Bailey. Any questions for Bailey on her staff report? Frank?
Bailey, we're saying this is a six lot subdivision, but what I'm meeting is, we're requiring that five, five or six be eliminated, which means we would really be approving a five lot subdivision.
Correct.
Okay, great. Are we gonna allow basements in this area? Do we have a high groundwater, or do we care?
According to the groundwater monitoring that they had, the sites came back dry, so that, that was part of that. So, that's why I don't have that as a proposed condition or anything on the face of the plat.
And then query, why are we, why was there an interest in requiring concrete as opposed to asphalt for the sidewalk?
You know, that was brought up by Richard, and it was, the concern was that we don't, under our current sidewalk standard, it is concrete. We don't have asphalt. We were trying to think of a, you know, any subdivisions that had asphalt sidewalks versus instead of a bike path, which can be asphalt. I know Doug had been looking, the applicant had been looking into that a little bit more, but that was, our current standard is a concrete sidewalk, so that's why.
Is, the road is gonna be private, correct?
Correct.
Is the sidewalk also gonna be private?
Correct.
Okay. Good reason to, and we're gonna require that the private road, as well as the private sidewalk, be maintained, correct? So, that if it happens to crack, rather than concrete, and they wanted to put that, but they have to repair that, correct?
That is, and that's their own private, their cost to do that, yes.
To do that, and they would be required to do that if we saw that and said, "There's a problem here," correct?
Correct.
Thanks. Further questions for Bailey? I had a couple of questions, Bailey. Is the only reason for not building these private roads with curb and gutters for the fact that there's already a 280-foot section constructed that lacks curb and gutter? Or because of the bio swell treatments?
I think it's because, in order to, to do them, it just requires a bigger right-of-way, and because it's only 50 feet and it's currently built, they'd have to go in and install some of that as well, and concerns with potentially impacting the neighbors, that also just makes the right-of-way bigger, and then makes the lot sizes smaller as well, so... That's my understanding, and trying to limit impacts.
Okay.
But the applicant's here, he could answer more questions, too.
Sure. Secondly, I was surprised the groundwater data came back dry. I know these are low-permeable soils. How effective will these bio swales be, and will that be reviewed at the time of the development permit with the stormwater plan? And if it's determined that they're not gonna be effective, would you then require curb and gutter?
I, that might be a question for Craig, who reviews that, or even the applicant may be able to address that as well.
Either one's fine with me.
Okay.
The applicant can definitely address it further, but we would definitely be reviewing soil permeability and groundwater monitoring data at the time of stormwater plan review.
Okay.
And if it doesn't calc out, then they'd have to come up with a revised plan to make sure they meet our stormwater standards.
Great. Thanks, Greg. Further questions for Bailey? Thanks, Bailey. We did advertise for a public hearing on this consideration of a request from Sage Partners for a preliminary plat at 415 and 1/2 Colorado Avenue. I do see the applicant is here. Do you have any further comments to make to the council? Please, and just name an address for the record, if you don't mind.
Thank you. My name's Douglas Joel Simonson with Sage Partners. And a couple of things. I appreciate, Frank, your question on the sidewalks. That was one of the things I wanted to talk about. I've done quite, Richard had asked last time, you know, about sidewalks and neighborhoods and types and whatnot, and no one really could, off the top of their head, so I went and did quite a bit of research. This is a little infill piece of property. It's a dead end, and, you know, first of all, if, if I have to have sidewalks, asphalt versus concrete would sure make a whole lot more sense. But I, we had actually submitted once a variance to have no sidewalks, and based on the public comment, neighbors and whatnot, everyone wants to keep the green space, the trees. This is an area that I know there is concern of drainage, and it's just a little dead-end street, and it, and the site, and it comes out to Colorado Avenue, and there is no sidewalk that it comes out to. There's no sidewalk on Colorado on that side. After Richard had asked his questions during the last meeting, I went out and drove around town and found a really common theme all over Whitefish, and I've listed, I could go through a long list, I can share this, but everywhere around town, northeast, west, or, you know, even south, in many neighborhoods, Tamarack Ridge has asphalt, you know, driveway or sidewalks, but the more, the more common theme is that any, there's so many streets that say "no outlet," and they have clusters of five to 10 homes, and on all those little streets like this, like I have, that say "no outlet," there are no sidewalks. And I would like to actually, you know, even ask, I mean, if I have to have an asphalt versus concrete, I would very much appreciate that, because it's a lot less money and recourse. It would be, you know, maintenance and whatnot would be, you know, provided for in the covenants and whatnot. But I would actually like you to consider going back to a previous submittal where we had asked for no sidewalks, you know, based on what's happening elsewhere, and it would be less impervious surface, as far as drainage goes in the property. It's just a short little dead-end street. The sidewalk that comes out does not abut to anything. There's no through traffic. I just think it makes a lot of sense, and, and, you know, based on so many other neighborhoods, I have, you know, documented, I could go through a list if you want me to, but I have probably about 25 examples around Whitefish, where it seems like the common thing is no outlet, no sidewalk, you know, on these little private dead-end streets, so... And because we have a little bit narrower access to this infill lot, it's just, you know, throwing any sidewalk in there just kind of crowds, you know, things, and again, it kind of adds more impervious surface, it's less green buffer area. I'd like to, you know, just throw that out there and ask you guys to, you know, consider it, because I think if I took you out there and you actually looked at it, you'd agree with me. But that's the main thing I have to say. I also will mention that one of the, one of the neighbors had an additional concern other than drainage and green space buffer, and he's here tonight. He'll probably talk about the no-build zone that we have on this property. It's a legal issue, I just ask that you guys don't be judge and jury on that. I'll have to get that sorted out privately, you know, with the neighbor, hopefully, you know, without being, you know, going legal, but I've talked to my engineers, too, and we have alternate ways of handling drainage, which we had hoped to use that no-build zone, you know, kind of subsurface underground as drainage, but the neighbor's interpretation of that is different than mine, but I'm committed to try and work it out, and thank you guys for your time, and hope we can get it approved. Thank you.
Thanks, Douglas. Appreciate your comments. Greg?
Hi, everybody. I'm the neighbor. My name is Greg Sandberg. I live at Track 2 Collier Estates. Just a few items following up on what Doug said. I have no problem with, like, asphalt sidewalks, if that's the route. Back to a couple of questions. Yes, the soil out there is tight silt and clays. We did have a pretty dry year last year. The problem is that it just doesn't drain anywhere, it just sits on top. That's kind of the problem with the water out there. But the main thing that I wanted to kind of bring to light or talk about tonight is what Doug mentioned about the no-build zone and some of the legal aspects that are involved with that. I've talked to a number of people in here, planning and zoning. I had some email today with Craig about this as well. For those of you who don't know, myself and Doug and his business associates have been in a legal battle about this property and what can be done on it for a number of years, to the point that it has gone to the Montana Supreme Court for a ruling. And what basically came out, out of that ruling was a number of things. One is that he would be able to build, build and do a development on his property like he's submitting right now, and he's able to do. And the other part of it is that the green space stays as a green space. Now, this agreement that we've been battling over has been part of this property for probably about 20 years now, prior to either of us owning the property. And in that, in that agreement, it says about the no-build zone, that it restricts the construction of any structures, buildings, or any other improvements, including but not limited to parking lots, parking areas, or driveways on that portion of the property that is known as the green space. It's said a little bit differently there. We've, I thought we were all in good space with this. Apparently, now they want, they've submitted that they want to put a detention basin in there, as far as their stormwater management plan, and I highly disagree with it. I looked up, basically, in the city, Whitefish City Code, in Title 11, zoning restrictions, Chapter 9 definitions. It's defined that a structure is "that which is built or constructed, an edifice or building of any kind, or any piece of work artificially built or composed of parts joined together in some definite manner and attached to the ground." To me, basically, between the Supreme Court ruling, the, what is defined as what can be done in that no-build zone, and the city definition of a structure, I don't see that that would be an allowable situation without Doug and I going further down this road and investigating. So, my request is before the stormwater plan that shows the detention is, basin on it is approved, is that this is reviewed, and hopefully Doug and I can get together and find a resolution before that happens. But that's about all I have to say. Thank you.
Thanks, Greg. Appreciate the comments. Further public testimony tonight on this item? Further public comments? I'll go ahead and close the public hearing and turn it back to the council for a motion or discussion.
I would move to approve the request of Sage Partners LLC for a preliminary plat for a six slash five lot subdivision located at 1415 and 1/2 Colorado Avenue. And if I get a, and a second or approval on that, I'd like to amend, move to amend some of the findings.
Great. Is there a second to the motion?
I'll second.
Seconded by Counselor Henin. Frank?
I would also like to move to remove the requirement for a sidewalk in that subdivision, and that failing, I would move to approve, or move that the sidewalk, if required, would be, would be asphalt rather than concrete.
There is a motion on the table, which will be a friendly amendment to remove the sidewalk requirement within the interior of the subdivision. Will, is there a second to that friendly amendment?
I'll second that amendment.
Seconded by Counselor Henin for full removal of the sidewalk. Further discussion on the friendly amendment? Andy?
Yeah, reluctantly, I...
Yeah, reluctantly, I will support that motion. I happen to live on one of those, you probably drove down Pack Rat Lane, and I'm on one of those no outlet roads that is narrow and has a very few houses on it. And I've lived there for 30 years, and I can tell you that it functions just fine. And I think that's true of all of the other ones around the community. There are quite a few of them. And I, if we were connecting through to somewhere else, then I would say, yeah, by all means, we're going to put a concrete sidewalk in there. And I wouldn't even think of an asphalt sidewalk as being adequate. But we're not going to connect through into anywhere else, and I'm perfectly comfortable with that.
Bailey, what condition number was that?
Sixteen.
Sixteen? Okay, so we'll vote now to strike condition number 16, requiring the interior sidewalk within the subdivision. Further discussion? All those in favor of the friendly amendment, please raise your hand. Those opposed, like sign, and that strikes condition number 16. Frank, anything further?
No.
Anything further from council? Back to the original motion for approval as amended with the deletion of condition number 16. All those in favor, please raise your hand. And those opposed, like sign, and that carries unanimously. Thanks for coming this evening. Hope you guys can work out an amicable solution, being good neighbors that you are. We'll move on to item 6B as well. I'm going to combine 6B and 6C, considering they're associated with both a conditional use permit and a preliminary plat for the same property. I will read those, but again, we'll take one public hearing and one public comment period, starting with item 6B, consideration of a request from IO 2.5 LLC for a conditional use permit to develop a nine lot subdivision consisting of three town unit townhomes and one three unit townhome located at 2041 River Lakes Parkway, also known as Under the Crescent Moon. And that will be followed by item 6C, which is a request for a preliminary plat if item 6B, which is the conditional use permit, is indeed approved. And I would request just two separate motions for item 6B and 6C. Wendy?
Perfect. That's what I was going to suggest as well. So back in August of 2018, the Whitefish City Council approved ordinance 1823. And the purpose of this ordinance was to provide the property owner a development mechanism to maintain the property owner's right to develop a neighborhood commercial center and preserve the public review process when development occurred. The approved ordinance set forth the conditional use permit as the review process. It identified particular uses, including the WR4 residential uses. So the preliminary plat accompanies this. So again, the request is a nine lot subdivision on 2.5 acres. It's a 3.6 dwelling units per acre density. Most of the lots will front on River Lakes Drive, and one of the townhouse lots will front on River Lakes Parkway. Both the streets are public and fully developed with utilities, sidewalks, and boulevards. The property is undeveloped and is zone WR4 with a PUD overlay. The growth policy designates the property urban. We did notify adjacent landowners, advisory agencies, and place a legal in the pilot, and we received one comment with someone with concerns about loss of open space. And that should, that is in your packet. So the proposal, the proposed use does comply with the growth policy because it's implementing the Riverside at Whitefish Plan, which is an amendment to the Whitefish Growth Policy. The project meets all zoning regulations, and they'll be confirmed at the time of building permit. The pond to the west of this project is a stormwater facility that serves the lake's neighborhood or portions of it. Once stormwater is treated, it overflows to the Whitefish River. This pond predates the development of the lakes and was likely a wetland at some point in the past. The Water Quality Protection Regulations regulate these as exempt from the wetland requirement, but places a 15-foot setback around these ponds. Some, these storm ponds, we've noticed, like the one south of the mall, they do have fringe wetland areas, and this pond is no exception. So the applicant hired a wetland specialist to identify edges of the wetland and classify it. And the report found that the wetland is very low quality, and that's along the north side of the property there. So that area has been mapped, and the regulations will require 15-foot setback around that. They've also been working with Army Corps of Engineers to determine if the wetland is jurisdictional, which they did find it is. So any work associated with this wetland will require coordination with the Corps. So the applicant is proposing to fill a small portion of that wetland along the north side, a little more than 2,000 square feet, and then provide a two to one replacement ratio because it's not an isolated wetland. It is associated with that larger pond area. Due to its proximity to the lots, we are recommending some sort of permanent delineation be installed so folks don't start encroaching into that area. It could be landscaping, split rail fence, or some sort of other recommendation, or other method. In addition, the applicant will be required to obtain a nationwide permit from the Army Corps of Engineers. Parkland is a requirement, and we can talk about that with the subdivision regulations. But there is setting aside again the wetland areas and areas adjacent to the lots. They're also in a good location to take advantage of the recreational amenities in that neighborhood, including Smith Fields and the path along the Whitefish River. That water is located in the streets, and similar to what Bailey described earlier, it is, DEQ is not currently approving projects involving water main extensions or expansion of our current system. And the city is working on providing DEQ the information it needs in order to allow such approvals. However, approval of this project may be subject to delays in additional review and discussions with DEQ staff. Sewer is located both in River Lakes Parkway and River Lakes Drive. As far as stormwater preliminarily, the applicant is proposing to discharge the stormwater into that existing pond to the west. The plan will be reviewed by the city and be required to meet all of our current standards for treatment. In addition, we're going to need some data showing that the pond has enough capacity to hold that stormwater as well. Again, both the streets surrounding the subdivision are public streets. No improvements are needed. The Parks Department went out and looked at the street trees and found them to be healthy, so no street trees need to be replaced. The private property owners will need to maintain that area. They didn't need a traffic generation study because there was not more than 200 trips. They will be required to go to architectural review for townhouses and the triplex. The density of the project, again, is 3.6 dwelling units per acre, which is well within the limits for the WR4, and is kind of a nice transition to the higher density, larger lots, to the kind of north and east of that project, and then the higher density to the south of this project. The character of the neighborhood was established with the adoption of the Riverside at Whitefish Neighborhood Plan, which sets out residential densities, product types, and recreational amenities. The density is pretty modest compared to the density that is permitted in the zoning district. And then as far as the preliminary plat, of course, a lot of the review criteria are pretty similar, but just to hit a few more of the highlights, this is not identified as a crucial wildlife habitat area by Fish Wildlife and Parks. They have done some groundwater studying and found that the groundwater is near or slightly higher than the pond level, and it is mapped as an area with potential for high groundwater. So staff did recommend a condition that subdu, or that structures would be limited to slab-on-grade and that no foundations would be permitted. The planning board did amend that, which we'll talk about in a second. And then as far as parkland dedication, they're required to provide 0.19 acres of parkland dedication. They're proposing to set aside 0.75 acres of property along the stormwater pond and the associated wetland area. And according to the subdivision regulations, the long-term protection of water quality features that equal or exceed the required parkland dedication exempts one from the parkland requirements. So this standard is being met. So the planning board held a public hearing on April 18th. They did recommend approval. We had one member of the public stand up in support of the project and also requested no parking on either side of River Lakes Drive. The planning board modified one condition and added a condition, and the conditions are the same in both the CUP and the preliminary plat, so it referenced both of them. The planning board struck the condition to only permit slab-on-grade foundations. The applicant suggested that they can engineer a crawl space. They'd like to have that flexibility. Staff would just like to ensure that future property owners are alerted to the high groundwater in the neighborhood, and so we would recommend rewording condition number 11 of the preliminary plat and condition number eight of the conditional use permit to add, due to high groundwater, it may be difficult to install crawl spaces. And then, and no basements would be allowed. So that would keep the remainder of that condition. The other condition that planning board added, which is number 18 of the preliminary plat and number 15 of the conditional use permit, was that a street tree protection plan during construction must be submitted and approved by the Parks Department, and that any trees requiring replacement must be insured for five years. So staff consulted with the Parks Department concerning this new idea and new condition. Parks Department was pleased with the idea of a street tree protection plan during construction. It's a really good idea. But we already have a process in place for damaged or destroyed public trees, and it was an ordinance that you folks passed a couple of years ago that prohibits damaging and public trees, including those within the right of way. And there's already a process set up for those replacements, including a penalty. In the last year and a half, working with these regulations, it sounds like the Parks Department is finding that they're working pretty well, and they're getting good compliance. So they weren't in support of the protecting a tree for five years. A typical warranty for a tree is about a year, and there can be many reasons why a tree may not last, you know, not just neglect. So again, they cautioned the council from making unique conditions for projects as it can be difficult for enforcement, and especially if we already have a process set up and we already have a regulation in place. So we would recommend the council change condition number 18 of the preliminary plat and number 15 of the conditional use permit to strike that last sentence and just leave the street tree protection plan portion in place. And then other conditions of approval highlights, we are going to ask for a wetland replacement plan, just to follow the standard requirements in the water quality protection, and then some sort of delineation along that wetland area. And finally, one question that came up during the public hearing was if the springs was slab-on-grade, and I had Linda pull the building permits, and it is, it's slab-on-grade. So that was a question that came up for you folks. Anything I can help answer?
Any questions for Wendy on her staff report? Frank?
Wendy, talk to me a little bit about the tree protection plan. Is it, was the concern of the planning board more that the, there are existing public trees there, and they want to make sure that they're protected for, that they, they aren't damaged?
Right.
Either intentionally or unintentionally, and that the trees have a right, have an ability to continue for five years? The concern being, you drive over the, the roots enough times now.
Right.
You're not going to see that damage maybe for several years. And so to ensure, were they trying to get that kind of a guarantee out of them?
No, I think it was more during construction, yeah. If someone destroyed a tree or damaged it, and then they had to replace it, that then that brand new tree that they put in would, they'd make sure that it survived for five years.
Okay. And one of the concerns, I think, that both the park board and we have had in the past is where we've got boulevard-type trees or public trees associated with the development, that the development doesn't take care of those trees or manage them as they're supposed to.
Right.
For that period of time, and it is because of neglect. Is that the issue they were trying to address?
I don't think so, because the trees are already there, and they've been there for years, and Parks Department already went out, and they said they're in good shape. They just need a little pruning. So it's not a brand new tree that's been neglected. It's during construction, how are we going to protect these trees and make sure that they maintain their viability?
Great. Thank you. Further questions for Wendy? Not seeing any. We did advertise for public hearings for both items 6B and 6C, which we will combine into one public comment period for both the conditional use permit as well as the preliminary plat. Rick or Doug, anything further to add as the applicant? Or Bruce? I didn't see you hiding behind there.
Good evening, mayor and council. Bruce Booty, landscape architect, 301 Second Street. And Wendy went through all the conditions and stuff that we were going to address, and we're in agreement with everything and all the changes. So I don't really have anything to add unless you have any questions for me or for Doug.
Great. Thanks, Bruce. Any questions for Bruce or the applicants? Not seeing any. Thanks, Bruce. Doug?
Doug Pettmeyer, TD Niche Engineering, 450 Corporate Drive, Kalispell, Montana. One thing that we just wanted to bring up because it came up in the discussion at planning board was the DEQ issue. Our applicant is full aware that, you know, as of right now, if we were asking to, to connect, we could not. And we understand that Public Works is working through that. So that was the one reason for the no vote. But I, I, I think that was the only comment. We're well aware that there needs to be some work done there, and our hope is that it'll be resolved by then. So we don't have any concerns with that, so.
I have a question for you while you're, you're up there.
Yeah.
This is, I mean, this is probably one of the highest groundwater overlay zones in Whitefish. I know that a lot of those, the Montero Development, for example, they, I think they have quite a few sump pumps that pump out into the street, into the storm system. What possibly will you gain by not doing slab-on-grade and requiring or allowing some flexibility to incorporate crawl spaces? What are you going to put down there?
So we have, we have a geotech, Josh Smith with Slope, with Slope Site is our geotech. And I think as of right now, we really don't know exactly. We just want the flexibility if Josh can come up with a solution that works. Obviously, the, the developer doesn't want to have an issue, and if high groundwater is an issue, you know, crawl spaces would probably be ruled out, and that's going to be Josh's recommendation. But we just don't want to rule something out upfront without having some more time to evaluate that, I guess, is all we're asking.
Makes sense. Okay. Thanks, Doug.
Thanks, guys.
Public comment tonight on this item, or these two items for that matter? Any public comments? I'll go ahead and close the public hearings and turn, and turn it back to the council for a motion or discussion on item 6B. Andy?
I'll make a motion on the conditional use permit first, and I would move to approve WCUP 19-03. Findings of fact, relative staff report, nine detached conditions as recommended to us by our April 18, 2019 planning board meeting, and further striking the last sentence in condition number 15.
Is there a second to the motion?
I will second. Are you intending to amend section, or condition number eight, consistent with Wendy's request regarding? I thought it was eight.
There are two.
We just fixed eight, we fixed one.
Let's get, let's get a second to the original motion, please, and then we can take amendments. Secuted by Counselor Sweeney. Discussion? Frank?
I would place a friendly amendment on this, at least with respect to the CUP, that we amend condition number eight, consistent with Wendy's request earlier. I can't remember what it was, the additional notation on the plat that there was high ground on or in the area. Is that consistent, Wendy?
There is a friendly amendment on the table to amend condition number eight, which will address, or place a note on the preliminary plat noting high groundwater. Is there a second to that motion?
I'll second.
Secuted by Counselor Fury. We will first vote on the friendly amendment before the original motion. Any further discussion on the friendly amendment? All those in favor, please raise your hand. And those opposed, like sign, and that carries unanimously. Michelle, which brings us back to the original motion for approval of the conditional use permit. All those in favor, please raise your hand. And those opposed, like sign, and that motion carries unanimously. Michelle? Then we'll just need a second motion for the preliminary plat. Katie?
Almost lost the water there. I move to approve WPP 19-03, adopt the findings of fact in the staff report, the 18 conditions of approval with the friendly amendments suggested by staff in regards to condition number 11, in which it states, due to high groundwater, it may be difficult to construct a crawl space, and no basements are allowed. And then also, condition number 18, striking the five-year replacement tree.
Thank you, Katie. Is there a second to the motion?
I'll second.
Secuted by Counselor Henin. Further discussion? All those in favor, please raise your hand, and those opposed, like sign, and that carries unanimously as well. Michelle? Thanks, Rick. Thanks, folks. We'll move on to item 6D. Christine, I hope I get your last name pronounced correctly, but this will be a consideration of a request from architect Christine Blile. Is that close? I got it. Great. On behalf of Whitefish Hotel Group for a conditional use permit. On behalf of Whitefish Hotel Group for a conditional use permit to expand the footprint of the Firebrand Hotel located at 650 East Third Street, and this will be WCUP 19-04. Dave?
Good evening. So, yeah, this, they're planning on expanding the hotel footprint, 588 square feet, to enclose what's currently an outside patio seating area along Second Street. They'll be enclosing it, heating the space. There's some existing stone walls that they'll be putting windows up and extending the roof over. It was apparently underutilized because of being north-facing and just people weren't really taking advantage of it, being kind of the cold edge of the building, and so on. They wanted to expand their dining area and enclose that. Because that's in the WB3 zoning district and the Old Town Central area, any footprint expansion over 7,500 square feet would require a conditional use permit. The building's currently over 16,000 square feet, so again, any addition requires it to come back to you guys. The original building received a conditional use permit back in 2015, and then they amended some conditions on that, as you guys may remember with the hot tub on the roof, and then in 2017, they got a CUP for a full bar at the site. All the conditions of those conditional use permits have been met. As far as the review criteria, we did send out a public notice within 150 feet. We did receive no comments from anyone in the public. Some of the review criteria, whether it's compliant with the growth policy, and again, this use is consistent with that general commercial district of the growth policy and the core commercial. The project complies with the zoning regulations. It will be required to get a full architectural review approval as well as a building permit. The site is suitable. That area of the patio is not in the public right-of-way, it is on their property, so there's no encroachments there, so they will be able to enclose that without any issues on the site. There's no parking requirement in the B3, but there is adequate parking at the facility. There's adequate landscaping and traffic, and there's no other issues with that particular property. As far as neighborhood and community impact, again, there's no major impacts with this minor footprint expansion, so no issues with neighborhood compatibility, and it's, again, it was preliminary reviewed by the Architecture Review Board, but she will have to go back for our final approval. Staff recommended approval of the project with seven conditions, they're all pretty standard conditions for the construction of the site. There's no special conditions on there, other than any new onsite lighting would be dark sky compliant, and then it must have architectural approval. This did go to the Whitefish City Planning Board. There was one public comment, Rhonda Fitzgerald spoke in favor of it, the planning board reviewed it, and they did unanimously recommend approval of the project. I would be glad to answer any questions, and the applicant is present.
Thanks, Dave. Any questions for Dave on his staff report? Not seeing any. The applicant is here. Christine, anything additional to add before we hold our public hearing?
Christine Blyle, 633 Colorado Avenue, Whitefish, and no, I don't have any other comments.
Nothing else to add? Thanks very much for coming tonight. We did advertise for a public hearing on this request from Whitefish Hotel Group for a CUP to expand the footprint of the Firebrand Hotel, and we will hold that public hearing now. Any public comment tonight on this item? Any public testimony? Not seeing any, I'll close the public hearing and turn it back to the council for a motion. Ryan?
I would move to approve consideration of request from Christine Blyle on behalf of Whitefish Hotel Group for a conditional use permit to expand the footprint of the Firebrand Hotel located at 650 East Third Street.
Is there a second to the motion?
I'll second.
Seconded by Counselor Sweeney. Further discussion? All those in favor, please raise your hand. Those opposed, like sign, and that motion does carry unanimously. Michelle? We will move on to items 6E and 6F, which will be ordinance 19-9 and resolution 19-7 respectively. Similar to the prior two public hearings, I'd like to combine this, these two items into one public hearing. We have an ordinance adding a new chapter to Title VII, Public Ways and Property of the Whitefish City Code to regulate small wireless facilities within the city's jurisdictional territory, and revising 11-3-24 wireless service facilities to clarify that section does not apply to small wireless facilities. That will be on a first reading, and again, ordinance 19-9, and also resolution 19-7 approving fees for small wireless facilities if ordinance 19-9 is approved. Again, one public hearing, but I will require two separate motions, one for the ordinance and one for the resolution. Angie?
Good evening, Mayor and council members. My report begins on page 506 of the packet. I'm going to handle both resolution and the ordinance as one because they are interrelated. I provided you guys a pretty thorough history, I think, at our last work session, but I would like to go back at the sake of being redundant and talk a little bit more about why we got here. I think there's been significant misunderstanding about what this ordinance actually does. We're not inviting 5G into Whitefish with open arms. We're attempting to regulate 5G with the tools that we have left available to us after the FCC ruling. So, sorry if I'm being redundant, but I really do want the public to understand why we're here. The Telecommunications Act was passed in 1996, and it was an attempt to deregulate the broadcasting and telecommunications market, and to open the markets up for competition by removing regulatory barriers. And one key provision of the 1996 Act allowed the feds basically to preempt state and local regulations that act as a barrier to entry into interstate or intrastate telecommunications markets. And three sections of the 1996 Act really operate to locate, limit local control. Section 253 prohibits state and local government regulations that prohibit or have the effect of prohibiting the ability of any entity to provide telecommunications service. Section 332(c)(7) expressly prohibits state and local government regulation of the placement, construction, and modification of personal wireless service facilities on the basis of environmental effects of radio frequency emissions, to the extent that such facilities comply with the FCC's regulations. And that same section requires that a state government, state or local government, act on a request for authorization to construct personal wireless facilities within a reasonable timeframe. Since the enactment of the 1996 Act, the FCC has issued guidelines for evaluating the environmental effects of radio frequency emissions. And while as a city, we cannot, we are prohibited from regulating wireless facilities based upon their emissions, as long as they're in compliance with federal law, we are allowed at least to evaluate them and make sure they're in compliance with the FCC standards. Section 11324, the city code currently regulates wireless service facilities. It hasn't been amended since 2005, and it's really directed towards the larger tower-type 3G and 4G facilities. Those kind of facilities are allowed as matter-of-right in ten specific zones, as long as certain conditions are met. If those conditions aren't met, they're, provide, they need to obtain a conditional use permit, which is reviewed for neighborhood compatibility, and then we have several design standards, height, lighting, co-location potential, and screening. So why we're here tonight is, on September 26, 2018, the FCC adopted a declaratory ruling and third report and order, which was geared towards speeding up the deployment of small wireless facilities. And small wireless facilities are designed to accommodate 5G technology. They're a lot smaller than the typical towers that we usually see with 3G and 3, or 3G and 4G, and they're generally attached to infrastructure in the public right-of-way, although some of them are present on private property as well. You do have a little diagram on page 507, which just kind of explains how they work. So the FCC was very, very worried about winning this race to, this 5G race. I don't know who we're racing or why we're racing them, but we apparently are. So the FCC ruling unfortunately really sharply curtails the authority of state and local governments to regulate small wireless facilities, and it relies heavily on section 253 of the 1996 Act, and it clarifies that effective prohibition under the state statute occurs when a regulation materially inhibits a provider's ability to engage in a variety of activities related to its provision of a covered service. Prior to the FCC ruling, several courts had basically held that local regulation was not prohibited as long as we weren't basically requiring facilities not to fill coverage gaps. This is so much broader. It, you know, our regulation can't prohibit them from providing new services, from improving services, so now we're kind of in a situation where if they just want to provide better service, we have to allow them to attach to our infrastructure. It's disappointing, and I think what we're trying to do right now is be proactive. We've been contacted, I at least have been contacted on one occasion last fall, about 5G and about small wireless facilities. So our intent as staff, as a city, is try, is to try to put some regulations into effect. Our hands are going to be tied if we don't have those in effect, and we're asked to process these applications. So the FCC specifically restricts local regulation of small wireless facilities in three different areas. First is the fees. They somehow thought that local governments were charging excessive fees to prevent them from putting their technology on city infrastructure. So it limits us to fees that are non-discriminatory and represent a reasonable approximation of locality's reasonable costs. The ruling also established some safe harbor fees that the FCC presumes are reasonable, and we can talk a little bit about that when we talk about the resolution. I will tell you right now that those safe harbor fees are not going to be adequate to compensate the city for the cost of processing applications and for the cost that attachment to our infrastructure is going to cause, but we can talk a little bit about that later. The second way it limits us is aesthetics. If we have aesthetic requirements, they are preempted unless they're reasonable, unless they're no more burdensome than those applied to similar deployments. They have to be objective, and this is kind of the kicker, they have to be published in advance, and that's why we've really pushed this ordinance forward, is the aesthetic requirements of the FCC ruling went into effect a couple weeks ago. If we don't have standards that are published in advance that are part of our code, if we are faced with an application, we have no grounds for denial, we have no grounds for preference in where these are located, and we have no grounds for making them comply with the aesthetics of our town, and they can be extremely ugly. And also, this FCC ruling established shot clocks, so basically, we have 60 days to act on an application for co-location and 90 days for attachment to a new structure. So we are tied with respect to how long we can take to really evaluate these applications as well. Numerous cities, last I heard, I think it was over 80, have filed suit in challenging the FCC's interpretation of the 1996 Act. In return, wireless providers have also challenged the FCC ruling claiming that it should have circumvented local control and authority even more than it did. Those cases have been consolidated, they're docketed in the Ninth Circuit Court of Appeals right now. The Ninth Circuit has not issued a stay, however, so cities, I think, across the US are struggling exactly as we are trying to put regulations and restrictions into effect. I'm sure you've read most of the public comment regarding the health concerns presented by small wireless facilities. I think those are very valid concerns. The problem is, is we can't not allow them in our towns as long as they are complying with the FCC standards for emissions. They also can be very ugly. I think, I provided you a few pictures. I think Mary Flowers provided several more pictures, actually, in her pack of information that are good. So what we're here trying to do is just ensure that the city is prepared to evaluate applications using the tools that we have, which unfortunately, after the FCC ruling, are not very significant. I don't know how quick 5G is coming, I miss, and I, but again, we, I know I at least have been contacted by Verizon asking what our regulations are for 5G, so I think we can anticipate some time in the future. We will be faced with applications. I don't know that we're going to get hit as much as larger areas are. I don't know that Whitefish really has the market for it, but we wanted to be proactive. So just to hit some of the highlights, the ordinance is extremely long, and I apologize for that. We were trying to plan for every contingency. We actually modeled our ordinance on San Rafael's of California. They are one of the California cities that is vigorously attempting to regulate 5G as well. So the ordinance requires a small cell permit for any small wireless facility in the right-of-way or on private property, although I think, as I mentioned before, they're generally in the public right-of-way. And the permit is administrative, or the proposed permit is administrative, and that's simply because of the shot clock. Pushing it through a public hearing, I think, in 60 days for co-location in most circumstances would be fairly difficult with notice requirements. It establishes an application and review procedure. The application procedure is quite involved. We would require construction drawings. If it's intended for the public right-of-way, we'd require survey, photo simulations, project narrative, a radio frequency compliance report to ensure that it complies with the FCC standards, and that would be prepared and certified by an engineer acceptable to the city. So we could pick and choose, rather than just being provided a report from an engineer that we don't really have any assurances is doing a good job. It does establish a public notice provision, and that is for applications on private property prior to approval. Notice should be mailed to properties and record owners adjacent to that. And that was been a switch in our original proposed ordinance that we talked about at the work session. We were asking for public notification to all property owners within 150 feet of any proposed small wireless facility. There were concerns raised at that work session regarding the cost and burden to staff of having to provide those notices, especially when we anticipate that most of the small wireless facilities will be installed in the public right-of-way and hopefully not residential areas. One alternative suggested was for the city to maintain an online map indicating the locations, so while people might not be receiving personal notice, they can at least look and see where they were. That was Dana's idea. I think it's very, it was a good one. Sets first with an appeals process, which allows applicants to appeal a denial directly to the city council. Again, we're working under that 60-day, 90-day timeframe. And then there's some standard conditions of approval that would attach to every permit that was issued, and those involve the permit terms, permit renewal, post-installation certification, a defined build-out period, compliance with the laws, minimizing adverse impacts to other properties, and an indemnity provision that would require providers to indemnify the city for any actions or damages caused by the installation of small wireless facilities. This was a provision that was pretty standard in the ordinances we researched, and again, if we can't prevent them from coming to the city, at the very least, we can force them to indemnify the city if we were to get sued over their facilities. Requiring a performance bond, basically, we don't want them to come attached to our infrastructure, decide that it's not a good market, and just leave their stuff hanging. So it would require them to post a performance bond for removal if they were no longer viable. And it requires a process for revoking a permit if they're not in compliance with their conditions. I will say that, one public comment that I don't think got in your guys' packet, because I don't think it was emailed until after 5:00, but I did have a discussion with the citizen, and I thought she had actually a very good idea, is to require not only initial monitoring of emissions, but maybe twice a year, require that they pay to have the emissions of their small wireless facilities monitored by an independent third party to ensure that they are within the FCC standards. So that is something we could add. I thought it was a really good idea, but again, it was somebody I talked to after 5:00 today, so it didn't make it into your packet. So it also establishes some location requirements. This is where we want, where, not that we want them, where we could have them, we would prefer to have them, which would be an industrial commercial and versus lease-preferred, which would be residential. It does state a preference for the facilities to be installed on existing streetlights or replacement streetlights to enhance concealment opportunities. Wood poles by definition- Wood poles by definition have some limitations, and you can't really hide the cables, and they look kind of really ugly on wood poles. With respect to decorative street lamps, they would have to replace the street lamp with one that met our standards but was engineered for small wireless facilities, unless they could have an engineer certify that the original streetlight could hold the facilities. In my discussions with Craig, we think that's probably fairly unlikely. So again, the intent is to have these as camouflaged as possible, and with respect to location, have them in areas that are more acceptable than residential areas. There are some setback buffer requirements, which allows an applicant to locate a facility in a residential zone or in a lesser preferred structure, only if it can establish that no more preferred locations or structures exist within 500 feet, or that any more preferred locations or structures would be technologically infeasible by clear and convincing evidence. And finally, it establishes some design standards, including overall height, camouflaging and concealment, equipment volume, and landscaping. We also have some design standards for those that are not going to be located on poles or utility poles but are going to be located on buildings, requiring, again, camouflaging to the extent possible. With respect to the resolution, the fees set by the FCC as presumed reasonable are proposed initially. Those are quite low. It's $500 an application fee for co-location of up to five small wireless facilities, $100 for each additional, $1,000 application fee for a new replacement structure, and a $270 annual fee for attachment of each small wireless facility to city infrastructure. We haven't processed these, so we have no idea what our cost will be. I will tell you that, again, this took away our ability to negotiate. We do have a 4G antenna on the top of the ESC that is shrouded and concealed, and we negotiated an $18,000 a year lease for that that goes up annually, so these fees are quite, quite low. I don't anticipate they are going to be enough to cover staff time or the cost of noticing adjacent property owners, but what we intend to do is track staff time and as we're going forward, and I think as these come in, we'll have a better idea of what truly compensates the city for the time spent on these, and we can adjust the fees via resolution. So I am available to answer any questions you may have. I'm sure you have a few.
Thanks, Angie. Any questions for Angie on both items? Frank.
Angie, can you explain to me what we mean by replacement streetlight poles, replacement wood utility poles versus non-replacement city streetlight poles and non-replacement standalone poles?
Sure. Let me go where you are if I can, I'm sorry.
It's, I'm looking on page 495 of the packet.
So sure. So streetlight poles, existing ones would be, of course, existing ones.
That I got.
Replacement ones would be, like I discussed, if there is a, they want to go on our decorative street poles, and those, to best my understanding, not engineered, probably not designed to support them. So they can replace that pole with one that is engineered for small wireless facilities, and they do make those.
Okay.
They look a little different, they're a little bulkier at the bottom sometime, but they certainly look better than having things actually hanging off the street pole. Existing or replacement wood utility poles, if they wanted to, for instance, and they're usually not ours, but replace a wood utility pole, again, engineered to shroud small wireless facilities.
Okay.
New non-replacement streetlight poles, I don't know that we would hate that idea, but they would have to be, and there's some design standards consistent with the lighting patterns that we've already established. And new non-replacement standalone poles, these are just new poles that are set to accommodate small wireless facility, and I, they're just, they're new infrastructure. I don't think that visually, they're very pleasing when they're cluttering up our right-of-way. If they can co-locate on something that is existing, I think we would prefer that.
Going back a little bit on abandoned wireless facilities, when we require them, or they're abandoned or deemed abandoned, they've got to remove them and shall restore all affected areas to a condition compliant with all applicable laws. Can we say, or should we say, in like-new or prior condition, so that it's real clear that we've got to have, if they screw this thing up, they're not using it, it's got to go back to at least as good a shape as it was before, as opposed to simply compliant with whatever the laws are at the time? Would that be something we should consider adding in there? Okay. And similarly, going back up here a little bit further, like in site management, again, we talk about what they're supposed to be able to do, keep the site, which includes all improvements, yappity-yappity, in neat, clean, and safe condition. That's different than what I'll call like-new or top grade or some other, I don't want them to use a shield that, oh, well, this is just degrading over time, it's, you know, it's just reasonable use, we'll call it. Whereas, we might replace the damn pole because it's looking bad, and, but they wouldn't necessarily have to. It seems to me we ought to have some leverage there or add something to that effect in that area, again, giving us some leverage to manage them. And is, when we say the cell permit shall automatically expire in 10 years and one day, where does that come from? Why not one year? Why not two years? Why not consistent with what we would do with an otherwise conditional use permit?
I think you, you know, that is kind of an arbitrary timeframe. I think if you wanted to make it consistent, so we have to treat them kind of the same that we do other deployments, but if you wanted to treat them consistent with a conditional use permit, I think that's great.
Seems fair. That's all I got right now.
Any other comments or questions for Angie? We did advertise for public hearings on what will be ordinance 19-9 as well as resolution 19-7. Are there any public comments this evening on this item, these two items? Just name and address for the record, please.
I'm Teri Belaska. I live at 515 West Ninth Street here in town, and thank you, mayor and councillors, for being here, and Angie too, for what you're doing. I want to thank you very much for the foresight you're doing to try and keep our community as safe as possible with the rollout of 5G. I do want to, based on the pictures that were up there, and it looks like what I read in the staff report that Angie Dunn wrote, there was, I referenced to setbacks of 500 feet, and in the diagram there, it showed that the small cell wireless has 50 to 500 meters of coverage for 64 users. And I'd like to maybe consider not a 500-foot, but having 1,500 feet, 500 meters between towers if they're going to be going up, and possibly avoiding them around schools and healthcare facilities. I know the FCC, we're following the Telecommunications Act of 1996, and the FCC specifically has become our healthcare organization in this. So along with what Angie has stated about having in our ordinance, being compliant with FCC standards for health issues, maybe have something in that too stating, and when a healthcare regulatory commission takes over, having it comply with the current healthcare information being put out by EMF scientists and physicians. So that way, we can be up to date when the powers that be get smart enough that the FCC should do their thing and let health people do their thing. The third thing was the monitor, oh yeah, that was the monitoring, and have that be put in with, I really appreciated that concept of quarterly, semi-annually monitoring of these cells. Yes, so they comply with the FCC standards, but again, with current healthcare standards once the government realizes that's what we need to pay attention to. I think that is, those were, oh, one more thing. Councillor Fury mentioned about sustainable tourism. I just, that word came up at the very beginning. Being that Whitefish, basically, has been evolving in the 30 years I've been here, from logging and natural resources to more and more tourism, it is a mainstay, I feel, of what our community is. A lot of income comes from that, even people coming here and doing business based on what we have to offer in the beauty of the environment. Maybe a lot of us take for granted, but you know in the vacation times, it's not taken for granted for people that come here. And I think that they, if we can do something about the legal system to realize that, make it paramount that that is what our community is, it's a place where people come to recreate, recreate the things that they miss, where there is 5G galore, and they have a lot of the technology that they work on, we can still be a haven, a recreational haven, sustainable tourism, to have people come where they really can feel rejuvenated and healed and thrive. So I kind of want to keep Whitefish heading that direction for now, the way it's been going so well, and that's all.
Thanks, Teri. Appreciate your comments tonight. Further public testimony on these two items.
I want to thank you for what you presented. I really appreciate the amount of work that you've put into this understanding of what we, you can and cannot do legally. I sent a letter prior to most everyone on the city council and to you, to Adam Hammond and a few others. I got a reply from Adam about other options that you, we, I don't know how to differentiate, this is my city too, we are pursuing for this. I appreciate the fact that you're trying to make the regulations as stringent as possible, perhaps even curtailing some of the desire for them to be here because they have such stringent guidelines to follow. But far more important than that, I think, is stopping this altogether, which would be fighting, joining the 90-city lawsuit, or Adam mentioned in the email to me that he's contacted Senator Tester's office, and you also said that you were pursuing other avenues. You didn't clarify what those are, so I don't know what they are. This is, and I think you know, and I've got, I am hearing from you, Angie, just in your voice as you're delivering this testimony, 5G is one of the most challenging health concerns that we will face, along with glyphosate. They're two most detrimental health challenges that we face, and they're sort of hidden from view. I'm surprised that this room isn't packed with people, and the only reason I could think of is that people don't yet know what is coming. Finally, years later, we now know that glyphosate is killing us, and Monsanto is being held accountable, million, multimillion, hundreds of million-dollar lawsuit payouts. That will be the case for this as well, but hundreds of millions of dollars doesn't help you when you're dying from cancer. So I think that while, yes, we need to adopt these standards, and I support that, and making them as strict and stringent as possible, we need to completely step up and fight with everything that we have. You're saying that $500 isn't enough to cover these applications, but if they're going to bankrupt our economy, we should do it at least by fighting them with everything we have. There will be no sustainable tourism, there will be no tourism, there will just be more hospital facilities being built in Kalispell to house the amount of sickness that is going to come from this. And that's not to be doom and gloom. I send all of you a couple of research things to look at, and I know that you've all sort of done a lot of your own research on this. But again, the lack of packedness in this room shows that the community doesn't know yet the detrimental effects that this is going to have on us, far beyond some ugly light posts. So I would love to see the full force of this city put behind, fighting this to stop this, and I think if enough communities across the country stand up, then we have an opportunity, you know, to stop this. We don't need faster downloads, that is so inconsequential. We do need to be healthy, we do need to have our ability to heal and to thrive and to live long lives, disease-free. That is far more important than faster connection to Instagram. So I would love to hear some ways that we can do that, ways that we can actually stand up and fight, whether it's joining lawsuits, fundraising money to do that. I will happily start a GoFundMe campaign to raise however much it would cost to do that. This is the crucial fight of our times. We must stop this from happening. So I'd love to have that start here. Thank you.
Thanks, Lauren. Further public comment tonight on these items.
Hi, my name is Don Caverly. I live at 335 Third Street West, and I'd like to extend an apology for all the interruptions that my daughter's noises caused, but it's an important enough issue for me that even without a babysitter, I thought I'd show up and just voice my opinion on it. Well, I did, when I first saw the ordinance, I did, was a part of the group that kind of misunderstood it, thinking that Whitefish was saying, okay, let's have 5G come with open arms. Having reread the ordinance a couple of times, having it emailed to me once I sent the letters, I do understand that it's a good thing to have this ordinance. However, I just want to stress and reiterate the health risks involved with 5G, and that's what I've tagged or attached to the city council members in my letter, is a bunch of letters from, in California, from doctors, from lawyers, and scientists outlining exactly the dangers of 5G and the constant exposure to 5G. And what I'm here to say is, especially to the children, because while it is going to impact us as adults, the exposure zones to the little ones is going to be actually more because they're smaller, but the zones are going to stay the same. So our future is with them. So please consider, I do appreciate in the ordinance that it says there's safe zones or fallback zones. I would say, let's make them more, and again, try to stop it from coming because there are serious health risks. Thank you.
Thanks, Don. Appreciate your comments tonight. Further public testimony. Yes, sir. Yep, absolutely. Just name and address, if you don't mind. Thanks for coming up.
Michael Anthony Paratori, 41 Vanderbilt Drive, Kalispell. I just found out about this last minute, I don't have anything prepared, but I wanted to come and sit in this one in lieu of the one we're going to probably be having pretty soon in our town. I also wanted to bring into something that they're doing in a town I used to live in, in Las Vegas. Kind of what the gentleman here was just speaking about is they did have, and they proposed it, I don't know if it ever passed City Hall, is communities had the ability to opt out of 5G. So if you got a large enough consensus within a subdivision or within a township, they had the ability to propose an option to had the ability to propose an option to negate, stay with 4G. That might be something to look at. I don't know how far it went, because I've been here now about a year, but that was one of the great things that they were talking about, on the standpoint of, you know, the FCC is pushing it very fast, federal government's pushing it very fast, but the research, that's a bad word, how it's going, the long-term effects it's going to have on the populace has not been determined, it hasn't really even been looked at. And one thing I was looking at, I have a medical background, I looked at an old paper I was writing off of a '65 General Motors study on microwaves on the autonomic nervous system. And there's a lot of similarities, I mean, that's the, this is the paper that they actually looked at when they were building the safe, you know, our microwave ovens that we have in our homes. They went over those findings and they were able to determine safety precautions within the home, based on how it interacted, those microwaves, how they interacted with our neurological, our action potentials, the frequencies that, you know, not only our heart or cardiovascular system, but also our neurological system, how they run on. And it's kind of similar to what they're doing. It's actually on a greater and more, you know, just a greater frequency, and it's more condensed area. So, think of it like taking your microwave and taking that productive layer off of it and using your microwave. You might have some problems, you might have some consequences. And that's kind of the thing that they should be looking at, and I don't think they are. I think capitalism, I think money is kind of interfering with that. I think their consensus is, we're going to see, this is an un-pioneered adventure, we're going to see how it goes. And that's going to be at, you know, mine, yours, you know, we're going to be the lab rats, I think, in this. And I don't think that's right. And I think we should kind of look at these older, you know, studies and take a look and see, I mean, some of them were anything from analgesic effects, you know, pain, discomfort, and then involuntary motor neuron mishaps, all the way up to death. And these are old microwaves, this is not 5G. These are what, you know, what our microwaves and older technology is. You know, now we have, 5G's is steroids, it's our microwave on steroids, without that productive casing. So, we, I think more studies need to be done before, and it just worries me how fast they're pushing it. And one thing I have to say is, I came here and I kind of thought most city councils or most governments were going to be on board with this. And I kind of liked that I seen that, you guys seem kind of like you're behind the eight ball, you seem concerned, and I like that. And I was going to ask you a question, but then I noticed you're an attorney, because I, you were, no, no, because you were mainly talking about like, well, we need to work on the regulations for this, and we needed to work on the regulations for that, and the wiring, and how it looks. You didn't talk about, you know, the effects it's going to have on your populace, but then I see you're an attorney, so you don't really deal in that realm. But, I mean, what kind of studies have you guys really kind of looked at? What kind of studies have they proposed to you guys? How it's going to affect people, how it's going to change? Because, you know, I hate using the word research, everyone uses the word research, it's a Google search, it's not real research, but I have never been able to find what frequency they're going to be using, you know, the abilities on it. They show like, you know, I think they show like 400 megahertz, all the way up to 400 gigahertz, but what are they going to actually be mainly using? And how is that going to interfere with our own bioelectrical system? You know, it's kind of like with a lot of things that the government does, is they keep things, you know, behind closed doors until the very end, or until the vote, and then they spring it, where, you know, there's nothing that would be done in that. That's really all I had to say. I mean, I didn't have anything prepared, and I'm not the best public speaker, but I just wanted to address that I liked seeing that you guys were concerned, and I don't know if it's encouraging to see how behind the eight ball you guys feel you are, but good that you guys are doing something, I appreciate it.
Thanks, Michael. Appreciate the comments and for you taking the time to come up tonight. Further public testimony?
Hi, I'm back for more, see if I can keep it together this time. I'm Amy, 46 Hidden Cedar Loop, Columbia Falls. This is my endgame though, Whitefish, so ahead of the curve, I guess. Thanks for taking the time to listen to your constituents. I'm here to support the local physicians, wellness providers, and healers in the area. They've done their due diligence and have provided some science-based evidence for your review regarding health concerns. From what I understand, 5G is to accommodate computer-driven cars and automated workers. And they're required every 300 feet, from what I've kind of dug up, I don't know how accurate that is. I think we're a place that's kind of driven, well, not kind of, we are, we're driven by nature, and the desire to unplug. People live here and come here to escape the barrage of city life. We live and play here not to be consumed by what we call the machine. So, I'm definitely skeptical of how this, how hard this is being pushed. And I don't really think we need faster internet, I think we're fine, I think we welcome those dead zones, we're okay with it, from what I can tell. I don't seem to have a problem with it. And I also think that there's a reason that Montana is considered the last best place. And I think it's crucial that we wait and see what happens in the metro areas in regards to those health concerns. Still shaking in the voice, but I'm here.
Doing fine.
Thank you so much for your time.
Thanks, Amy. Appreciate it. Further public testimony? Let me go ahead and close the public hearing and turn it back to the council for consideration or a motion for ordinance 19-9, as well as resolution 19-7. Ryan?
I would move to approve ordinance 19-9, an ordinance adding a new title to, a new chapter to Title VII, Public Ways and Property of the Whitefish City Code, to regulate small wireless facilities within the city's jurisdictional territory and revising Section 11-3-24, Wireless Service Facilities. To clarify, that section does not apply to small wireless facilities.
Thank you, Ryan. Is there a second to the motion?
I will second the motion, but I would like to make a couple of, or proper, several amendments to the current ordinance.
Seconded by Counselor Sweeney. Ryan, would you like to address your motion, or should I turn it over to Frank for amendments?
I would just say, if you're frustrated, you know, as I think a lot of people are, contact Senator Tester, contact Senator Daines, contact Representative Gianforte. There's not a whole lot we can do about this. The FCC, they kind of control all this, so we have to act or else we're going to be way behind, way behind the eight ball, so that's what I would encourage everyone to do.
Thanks, Ryan. Frank?
Angie, I, well, I would proffer an amendment that we include a requirement within the ordinance that each of these facilities, to the extent they are permitted, be tested not less than twice annually for whatever emissions are coming off of them. That's mine.
By a private party, third party?
Yes. And paid for by the applicant.
There is a friendly motion on the table to include that each facility be tested not less than two times annually by a private third party to be paid for by the carrier. Is there a second to the motion? Friendly amendment, I should say?
I'll second.
Discussion on the friendly amendment. And Angie, I believe you could just bring this back under the second hearing, correct, for our review? Okay. All those in favor of the friendly amendment, please raise your hand. Those opposed, like sign, and that motion does carry unanimously.
Could I offer one, at least one more? I would offer that we amend the ordinance to require that any facilities that are abandoned or otherwise unused, that they be repaired or restored to like-new condition or prior to the installation of any facility. I would also add a requirement that the ordinance require that the facilities be maintained or any poles be maintained in what I will call like-new or similar language for the duration of the existence of the facility, and that the limit, the length of time-
Let's take that as a separate amendment, if you don't mind. Did you catch that, Angie, in terms of Frank's friendly?
Yep.
Is there a second to that friendly amendment?
I'll second.
Seconded by Counselor Henin. Further discussion? All those in favor, please raise your hand. Those opposed, like sign. That carries unanimously. Frank?
And I would like to limit the life of these permits, to the extent they're applied for and approved, to not 10 years, but to three years, as we would any CUP or conditional use.
Is there a second to that friendly amendment?
I'll second.
Dave, do you have some concern with that?
Oh, this, conditional use- Permits are valid for 18 months, but these are, you know, it's administrative CUP per sort of, but not really, I don't know.
My point of that is, is that I want, if these things are approved, I don't want them sitting there for 10 years. I want them on a time track that they're either going to use or not use them, and it needs to be done within as short a period of time as possible. What can we do? Tell me.
Frank, I think that's fine, and I think three years, you know, initially, we're just going to have to see how it all pans out, and I think three years is as good a starting point as any.
Is everyone familiar with the amendment? So, that was seconded by Counselor Henin. Further discussion on the friendly amendment? All those in favor, raise your hand. That's unanimous as well. Michelle, which brings us back to the original motion for ordinance 19-9 as amended. Further discussion? Frank?
I just want the public to understand that we know that we're not solving the biggest questions that you have, which are the health concerns. We're barred from doing that. We just don't have that opportunity. And to the extent my amendments or what we're doing here looks like we're putting lipstick on a pig, so be it. We've got to do something to protect the city as best we can for what we've got. So, I appreciate it, and we hope that we approve this. Thank you.
Thank you, Frank. All those in favor of the motion, please raise your hand. Those opposed, like sign, and that motion does carry unanimously for ordinance 19-9. And we will need a separate motion for item 6F, resolution 19-7. Ryan?
I would move to approve resolution number 19-7, a resolution approving fees for small wireless facilities.
Is there a second to the motion?
I'll second.
Seconded by Counselor Williams. Further discussion? Frank?
Query, Angie, is there a way for us to come to or require that we make an evaluation of the actual cost, as in a very timely manner, you know, it's after the first one we get, after the second one, you know, so we get ahead of this before we get way, in a way deficit situation?
Yeah, Frank, I think that's our intention, is to track our actual costs from the second we get one. The FCC order doesn't absolutely prohibit us from charging higher fees, but we have to justify those, our actual costs. So, I think we intend on tracking it pretty stringently, and again, I don't think that these fees are going to be adequate to compensate the city for our costs, but we plan on tracking that, and once we have a better ballpark, reasonable fee, we can come back with a resolution and change it.
Do we, would it be helpful to staff, for us to include in this resolution, that we, that it be revisited at a certain point in terms of numbers of applications we've looked at, or just to trigger to make sure that whoever's here understands that that's what we've got to do?
Sure, Frank, I think that would probably be helpful.
Is there a number of those applications that you would like us to require, a trigger number for us to require, that that be evaluated and a new resolution be brought to us?
Craig, any ideas? Maybe a minimum of, so, kind of one of the issues I'm dealing with is, is the FCC makes us allow batched applications, so we can have an application for up to five on one existing facility. I would say maybe we'd have a handle on it at 10 at the minimum, but I'm just kind of pulling that number, it's arbitrary, pulling it out of nowhere.
Mr. Mayor, I would like to make a motion to amend the resolution to require that at a number not to exceed 10 applications, that staff be required to bring back to us the actual costs or incurred costs for processing these applications so that we can properly adjust and justify the, any adjustment.
Great. Is there a second to the friendly amendment?
I'll second.
Seconded by Ryan. Further discussion on the friendly amendment? All those in favor, please raise your hand. Those opposed, like sign. That carries unanimously, which brings us back to the original motion for approval. As amended, all those in favor, please raise your hand. Those opposed, like sign. Thanks very much, Angie, and we are going to take a short recess, we'll be back at about 9:07.
Advertise and bid the project in July, award the project in August, and then basically build that this fall, starting just after Labor Day. The total budget that we have in fiscal year nineteen for this project is $400,000. To date, we spent about $35,000 on engineering and estimate about 20,000 left in engineering to finalize the design and bid the project. And the three options in terms of construction costs are option one, which is the road closure, is $323,327. Option two, which is the one-way, is the most expensive project, but that does include considerably more reconstruction through the slump and kind of a more permanent one-way solution, that's $369,402. And then the narrow two-way, which I just discussed, is estimated for construction at So, given the engineering, we think that we can get options one or three completed for the budget, but the one-way option would take a little bit more. So essentially, based on the guidance and direction that we've received and the public input, it is staff's recommendation that we move forward with option three. I really feel that this option strikes a balance between meeting the needs of the neighborhood, improving the safety concerns, and reducing future maintenance needs. So assuming that we're authorized to move forward with that, we would bid the project and then, of course, come back to council for a potential project award.
Thanks, Craig. Any questions for Craig? Frank?
Craig, what is the likelihood that by doing option three, that we will have effectively solved our problem in a longer term than we have with the prior fixes?
Well, I mean, the prior fix was done in 1997, so it's lasted about 22 years. I anticipate that we will get 20 years out of this fix. I don't know that it's going to last much longer. I think that as that lightweight fill continues to decompose, we're going to see continued settlement of the road. But by reducing the width of the road and pulling the traffic, you know, closer to the inside curve, I think we're going to go a long way towards improving the situation. But it's not intended to be, you know, a 50-year fix. I think in 20 years, we'll be talking about, you know, what we do to maintain safety on this roadway.
And what would be your answer similarly on option two?
I think option two will give us a longer life. There's additional excavation and reinforcement that's proposed in that option. But again, it just, it doesn't strike that balance with meeting the needs of the neighborhood. We have, we were met with significant, I don't want to say controversy, but concern at that last public meeting. I think really the dynamic of the neighborhood and the folks that showed up at that second public hearing, or the second public meeting, changed quite a bit, and we understood full well at that point that they did not like the one-way option.
Thanks.
Further questions for Craig?
Craig, just to clarify, so we had discussed, or I think option one and two had a separated bike or, you know, walking path. I assume this is going to be a shared street?
Yep.
That's kind of marked for bikes?
I should have mentioned that, yeah. We will paint what are called charros on the road, which is sort of a
Charros.
The typical symbol for sharing the road. So it'll be marked both directions for bicycles and vehicles, and then, of course, we'll maintain the existing sidewalk on the other side of the road.
Great. Thanks.
Motion? Comments? Frank?
I would move to approve or authorize to proceed the bidding of Central Avenue Reconstruction Project based on option number three presented to us this evening.
I'll second.
That motion has been seconded by Counselor Williams to proceed with bidding for option three. Further discussion on the motion? All those in favor, please raise your hand. Those opposed, like sign, and that does carry unanimously. Craig, we'll stay with Craig and move on to item 7B, which will be Resolution 19-8, a resolution authorizing the acquisition of property for the State Park Road Reconstruction Project.
Thank you. So as you're also aware, we've been working on the State Park Road Reconstruction Project. This is the next project in the resort tax priority list. Council did authorize staff to go out to bid on Phase One of the work back in April, that was April 15th. And so with the Phase One work, the design work completed, we've begun looking pretty heavily at the design work that needs to take place for Phase Two. And as we continue north with State Park Road into Phase Two, the right-of-way width comes into question in a number of locations. You guys have a detailed list and map in your packet of the potential right-of-way acquisitions that we need in order to carry the road profile and shared use path all the way to the railroad tracks, and it is relatively extensive. The budget for the State Park Road project, estimated about $455,000 in land acquisition cost. Total budget for the project is 5.3 million, I should mention. Right now, with the title work and the appraisals that we've conducted, we're estimating that we'll be under that $455,000 land acquisition. But nonetheless, I'm sorry, excuse me, $455,000 is what we're estimating. That 5.3 million budget assumed $530,000 in land acquisition. So we're about $45,000 under the budget with our current estimate. But in order to finalize that, we do need to continue to negotiate with property owners, and I'm looking for approval of the resolution, which would allow us to move forward with those land acquisitions and essentially give the city manager permission to sign closing documents.
Questions for Craig?
Questions for Craig on his staff report? Craig, I got a question. What's the likelihood that we'll be able to acquire what I assume would be properties two, three, and four to eliminate the 290-degree bends on State Park, kind of improve the radius there?
We've had a number of conversations with that property owner, and at this point, they did have plans to develop that property, but we've come up with some solutions that will allow us to realign the road, give us some space to do some stormwater management, and maintain a couple of driveways for them. So it's looking promising.
Good. Good.
Yeah, the one that we're currently struggling with, without going into too much detail, is the furthest north, that property number one. There's a pretty significant section of roadway that we're down to about 30 feet of right-of-way, and so we need approximately 30 feet along that entire frontage, and so we're working through that one right now.
Okay.
Other questions for Craig?
Craig, do you need, as part of this, as part of any motion that we might make, a not-to-exceed number for this land acquisition? How do we deal with?
You know, I think at this point, we have an approved budget that's in the CIP, and we'll be coming to you guys in the FY '20 budget. It's approved for FY '19, and most of this comes with the FY '20 budget. And so I think the assumption on the part of staff is that if we need to exceed the budget, then we'll come back.
Okay. Thanks. Motion? Andy?
If I can get my mic turned on there, I would move that we approve Resolution 19-08, and that's a resolution authorizing the acquisition of property for State Park Road Reconstruction Project.
Is there a second to the motion?
I'll second.
Seconded by Counselor Henin. Further discussion? All those in favor, please raise your hand. Those opposed, like sign, and that carries unanimously and brings us quickly to item 7C, which is the review of our proposed water conservation ordinance. Craig?
Okay. So as we've already heard a couple times this evening, and we've also talked at the last council meeting, DEQ has notified the city that they are not currently approving water main extensions, subdivisions, or MFEs for the City of Whitefish, based on concerns with our water capacity and our water storage. We have submitted to DEQ the documents that they have requested, analyzing our storage capacity, looking at our water production capacity, and including a pretty detailed water use reduction plan. One of the most important parts of that water use reduction plan is the adoption of a water conservation ordinance, and that's what I am presenting here tonight. I should mention that the city has been very effective over the last couple of years at reducing our water loss. We were upwards of 40% to 45% in our water loss just a couple of years ago, and through a number of projects, most notably the cast iron water main replacements that we've done recently, we have that number down below 20%. And so we presented that information to DEQ, and it definitely weighs very favorably for the city. Nonetheless, we still need to go further to reduce water consumption, especially in the summer months. Depending on precipitation and temperature, we know that irrigation can account for as much as 21% of our annual water production. So we feel that through the adoption of a water conservation ordinance, we can achieve a number of goals. One, we can demonstrate that water and sewer users can reduce future rate adjustments by reducing consumption. We can develop through conservation a critical interim source of water until new sources are developed. So DEQ will actually consider water conservation to be an adequate source of water, and so that's a very important note as we look at this ordinance, or this proposed ordinance. We can reduce peak summer demand, which will allow us to essentially run the water system with one of our four water filtration treatment trains out of service, also important to talk about as we're considering this ordinance. And then, of course, we can reduce water waste through this conservation ordinance, which will also reduce runoff of nutrients, chemicals, and sediment. So just real quickly to sort of summarize what the ordinance talks about, first and foremost, there are general conservation measures in this ordinance. These are essentially rules that are to be followed all the time regardless of the current events or conditions, and then it'll lay out additional conservation measures that will be triggered by specific events or conditions. So I think the biggest restriction that's in this general conservation, or group of general conservation measures, is that all outdoor watering will be prohibited between the hours of 9:00 AM and 5:00 PM. So we're essentially saying that there'll be no irrigation taking place for the bulk of the daytime hours. This is the time that the city historically has struggled to keep tanks full, and we really do need to put more water in the tanks so that we can fight fires, is really what it boils down to. And so we think that by trying to curb the daytime irrigation and pushing it as much of that into the nighttime hours as possible, we'll be able to do so. We are cognizant of the fact that not everybody has an automatic sprinkler system. People do move sprinklers around manually still. So we feel that allowing people to do that before 9:00 AM and after 5:00 PM still gives people an opportunity to water their lawn or their landscaping if they don't have an automatic sprinkler system. We will be, as a general measure, requiring that commercial lodging establishments provide guest options to not have their linens washed every day. We'll be specifically stating in the ordinance that watering will not result in coverage of pavement areas or result in excess runoff. Seems like kind of a no-brainer, but it needs to be pointed out in the ordinance that, you know, let's water the grass or the landscaping, not the pavement. And then, of course, we will, as a billing department, have the ability to conduct audits under the general conservation measures. So then we get into a couple different triggers. So water shortage declarations will essentially result in further conservation measures. A stage-one water shortage, this will happen essentially any time that all four water treatment filters are online. This has happened for three of the past four summers, and so there is a pretty good likelihood that we'll hit a stage-one water shortage at some point here in the next couple of years before we expand our water treatment plant. Will also hit that stage-one water shortage if any of the Flathead County is deemed to be in an extreme drought condition, and that's reported by a federal drought agency. So under stage-one water shortages, everything from the general conservation stays in effect with the addition of a couple more stringent watering measures. So under a stage-one, we're going to be limiting watering to two days per week, and there's a specific schedule that's laid out for that. Watering cannot take place on Mondays. Mondays historically is our largest water demand day, and so under a stage-one restriction, nobody waters on Mondays. And then there's days of the week laid out, depending on whether you're a single-family residence, a multifamily residence, or commercial or government. There'll be no new turf planted. If we're under a stage-one water restriction, we realize that planting of new turf, whether it's sod or seed, requires considerably more water than you can provide two days per week, so that will be outlawed. You do need to turn off all of your exterior water features. So if you have a pond or a fountain, can't use it during a stage-one restriction. Car washing will be prohibited, other than at commercial car wash facilities. We've noted through research that washing cars at home uses considerably more water than at car wash facilities, so that will be restricted during a stage-one water shortage. And then, of course, by formal action, under a stage-one, the city can further limit minutes of irrigation. So even though you can water twice per day, if we see that there's a need, we can further limit the watering that happens on that two days per week, excuse me, not twice per day, twice per week. Stage-two water shortage, so if we have any kind of a critical supply failure, a large water main break, or one of our water treatment filters goes out of service, we go into a stage-two water failure, or stage-two water shortage. We can also trigger a stage-two water shortage if we are in what's called an exceptional drought condition. Again, that's reported by the U.S. Drought Monitor. Pretty stringent, under a stage-two emergency, there's an outright ban on outdoor watering. Under a stage-two emergency, we're also saying that no new landscaping is permitted. So beyond just planting new turf, no new trees or shrubs, or any new landscaping can be planted. And then also, under a stage-two, is an outright ban on washing motor vehicles, boats, trailers, pavement, or the exterior of any building. It should be noted that under any of these water shortages, we are still allowing decontamination to prevent the spread of aquatic invasive species, of course. The last thing we want to do through one of these is further jeopardize our water system by allowing AIS into the lake. So that's the bulk of the restrictions and the triggers. It should be evident, you know, through these stringent changes in our water conservation, that we're working really hard to expand capacity and to evaluate the feasibility of an additional water source, being groundwater. We're also working really hard to make sure DEQ has all of the information they need in order to allow us to continue to grow and to grow intelligently under our growth policy. We have provided, as I mentioned, the capacity evaluation, the water reduction plan, the storage information they need, and we're expecting to have some more formal comments from DEQ here in the next couple of days. But based on any comments we may receive here, it is my recommendation that we take this draft language, formalize it into an actual ordinance form, and then present it at the next council meeting for a first reading. I should mention that we did send this proposed language out to all of the landscapers and irrigation contractors that we could find in the valley, and we haven't had that one out, I think, last Wednesday. We've not had any formal comments yet. We also discussed this with Maria and her staff, and so we're working hard to, you know, put together language that DEQ thinks will help us get to where we need to be, but also, you know, keep us somewhat green here in the summer, so.
Thanks, Craig. Any questions for Craig? Andy?
The only thing that caught my eye in here is in the stage-two restrictions. I think we need to make an exception on the washing of building or structures for painters, because house painters have a really limited window of opportunity to make money in the summer, and they generally have to power wash a house before they can paint it. So we might want to at least have some way we can deal with that.
Yeah, you know, I also question the all-out ban on, you know, washing motor vehicles and boats. I mean, I think in general, well, the one existing car wash in town is on a well, so it won't affect them. I should mention this ordinance will only affect, you know, City of Whitefish water system users. There is a potential new car wash that's making its way through site review, and I believe they're going to have a rather elaborate recycling system. And so I think we may need to formulate some language, and I can work on that in the actual ordinance that talks about water recycling so that we can keep, you know, we don't want to put commercial establishments out of business, and so I think I can work on that all-out ban language to address some of those things. But no, painters is a good point.
Craig, I had a couple questions. I don't think we have one in town, but in the event we did have a tree nursery, a nursery in general open up, how would that be impacted by a stage-two restriction?
Yeah.
A commercial operation?
I mean, there, stage-two is an outright ban on watering, and so, you know, perhaps we can tweak that language so that it's non-commercial watering, or something along those lines. So if you demand water to sustain your business, you demand outdoor watering to sustain your business, then perhaps that's an exemption?
Yeah, something to think about. I mean, just maybe you guys could craft some language and bring it back at the next meeting. The other two, or one area of concern, are the golf courses. So it's my understanding Iron Horse is on a private system they draw from Whitefish Lake, correct? Or well system?
They, yeah, they have a private well that serves all of Iron Horse.
All of Iron Horse?
Yeah, and Whitefish Lake Golf Course is off of the lake.
All entirely off the lake?
I believe so. I don't know about the south course.
Okay, just might want to check on that.
All of the north course, but we can confirm that.
South Course is?
Oh, out of the lake.
It is.
Okay.
So north and south courses?
I understand.
Just wanted to check on that. But yeah, some exemption for, you know, businesses that, you know, require the use of water to sustain their business, I think would be reasonable.
Yeah, I should also point out that, you know, a stage-two is, you know, one of two things has to happen. Either we have a critical failure, which I can pretty much guarantee we're going to fix as quickly as possible, or if we're under extreme drought, I don't know of any time in the recent past that Flathead County's been under extreme drought, and so the odds of a stage-two emergency being triggered are, I'd say, fairly minimal.
Sure.
Nonetheless, something to consider.
Further discussion or a motion?
I would just say, as we kind of continue with these streetscape projects, similar to what you did between Third and Fourth Street on Central, I think we should look at all opportunities we can to lead by example with the Xerik landscaping. And I also noticed the other day, actually, a landscaper brought it to my attention, there's some private irrigation heads going in within the city right-of-way on a boulevard off East Second Street, and there's literally an irrigation head every five or six feet. You can go out and look at the pin flags. Whether or not they're planning on flood irrigating the boulevard is, I'm not sure, but it just looked a little bit suspect if we're talking about water conservation on the public right-of-way. That's just an editorial comment.
Motion? Do we need one? Do we need one, Craig?
No, I'm just looking for kind of, not even approval. I wanted comments, and then this will come before you at an actual public hearing at the next meeting, so we'll take into consideration the comments that we've heard, and of course, any that we get in the next couple of weeks, but this will be advertised as a formal public hearing at the next meeting.
Great. Thanks, Craig. We'll move on to item 8A, Resolution 19-9, requesting distribution of the Bridge and Road Safety and Accountability Program funds. Dana?
Good evening, Mayor and City Council. This is an annual resolution that will be coming to you now, from now until the future. In the prior session, legislative session, they increased gas tax to help fund projects within local communities. This year, we're pulling down our second group of funds. That would be about $124,000. Public Works has identified the Monaghan Road Reconstruction Project for these funds. It requires a 5% match that's budgeted out of our street maintenance assessments. It cannot be, you can, your match cannot be the previous gas tax that we also received. So they made this one a little bit more complicated, so every year you get to pass a resolution requesting distribution and identifying the project that it's to be used for. So with that, I would request that you approve the resolution included in your packet. Thank you.
Thanks, Dana. Any questions for Dana, or kind of a motion? Katie?
I would move to approve Resolution 19-9, a resolution requesting distribution of Bridge and Road Safety and Accountability Program funds.
Is there a second to the motion?
I'll second.
Seconded by Ryan. Further discussion? All those in favor, please raise your hand, and that's unanimous. Michelle, you have Adam's report enclosed with the packet. Any questions for Adam on his update?
My only comment, Adam, was if we need to craft a letter to, in support of Amtrak, I'd be happy to sign that, or you can go ahead and sign it, whatever you feel is most appropriate, but I think that's important and something we should probably do.
Okay, all right.
If you agree.
Yep, I do.
Katie?
I just wanted to confirm that our Whitefish Strategic Housing Plans Steering Committee meeting will actually be at 6:30 PM tomorrow and not 6:00 PM.
Yes, nice catch. It will be at 6:30.
6:30.
And I did send a reminder out today, and I think I got the 6:30 time.
You did get it. You did get it in there.
Okay, good. It is 6:30, yes.
Yep, perfect. Thank you.
Adam, anything additional to report on?
Nope, that was the main thing I was going to point out, is the Housing Steering Committee will meet tomorrow night instead of Thursday night.
Okay, thanks. Move on to item 10, Communications from the Mayor and City Councilors. I'll just give a quick recap of our appointments to volunteer boards. We reappointed Terry Dunn and Jim De Herrera to the Board of Park Commissioners, both incumbents. We appointed Stephen Kane to the 93 South Corridor Steering Committee. We appointed Ross Doty to the Police Commission, an incumbent, and I think he's on to his fourth three-year term. And then Catherine Scamp to the Architectural Review Committee, who's also an incumbent and will serve an additional three years. And we'll start with Andy with any comments tonight.
Yeah, just a couple. I just wanted to make a couple comments about the Sustainable Tourism Master Plan Committee that we talked about at our retreat, said I didn't really know what the deliverable and the product would be out of that, and it kind of, bringing in the consultant is, I think, will help. Kate McMahon will do a great job, because she knows us from a planning standpoint, and Lorraine Roach knows us from some other standpoints. And it's interesting, because when Lorraine Roach's firm was here in 2001, and they did the overall community survey, and they had six priorities for improvement in Whitefish, and the first one was address traffic issues. and the first one was address traffic issues, obviously, which is probably number one still. Heidi's survey and those 600 respondents we had that the STMP committee did, basically the same one. Prove zoning regulations to control growth, preserve town character, probably right up there again, top in both Heidi and our survey. Address growth, development, water quality, and community facilities and services, still right up there 18 years later. But interestingly enough, then, the next three, number four was build a more responsive city government and law enforcement. That didn't even show up in anybody's written comments. It didn't show up in any of the questions or anything, so kudos to everybody that's worked really hard over the last 18 years to deal with that. Number five was enhance recreational facilities. Didn't really hear much of that in any of the respondents now. And then the sixth one was add bike paths and pedestrian paths, and we didn't really hear that, because we've done all three of those things. So again, kudos to everybody that's worked really hard. But what I think, I, sitting there, and Lorraine was talking about, well, if it's not going to be tourism, what do we look at for other economic growth opportunities? And it kind of struck me, thinking about the 600 respondents to ours, and how many, Heidi, did you have on the pilot?
170.
How much?
170.
170, that's right. So we had, and some of them, there's probably some crossover, but say we had 700 people, which is a pretty broad spectrum of folks. And a lot of the comments dealt with, you know, access, I mean, like, literally having to wait in line when you'd go to a restaurant, and, you know, the trailheads are busy, and all of those things. And I think from the STMP, it's, like I said, we're wanting to blame all of that on the tourists, but I think what we're seeing, and we'll come out of there with a little more, is it's also the fact that we're part of the problem, too, as the people that live here, as we move to what we've become, a recreation-based economy. So when there's 5,000 people skiing on the hill on a Tuesday, on a powder day, it's a lot of local people, you know? But yet we're thinking and we're complaining about tourism as being the reason that somebody took my line in good medicine. Well, that's not really what happened. You know, it's us. And I think what, I sort of feel like now that committee is going to look at, and we're going to see, is sort of what is almost a building block or a foundation for what we'll look at when we go through the growth policy document, because we're going to look at sort of what defines us more as a community and what people want to see out of this community. It's not just managing the 600,000 people that spend one or more nights here. It's managing all that has been created by the fact that those 600,000 people come here, but we use, quite frankly, at a higher rate than they do. I mean, the hills, 60% of the skier days up there are season pass holders. So that means it's only 40% of the skiers we really need to manage. We need to manage the other 60% that are us. So I think it, like I said, I don't know exactly what that product is going to look like, but I think there's going to be a lot more substance to that in terms of how we look at this community. Because I think it's the first time that we've really sat down and said, we're a recreation-based economy, that's what's driving everything. It's that ongoing pressure on the resource for us as locals that is what's really making people take notice and be concerned. So, I don't know, it's going to be, it'll be an interesting process. We'll see. And that's it.
Thanks, Andy. Ryan?
Nope.
Thanks, Ryan. Katie?
Frank?
Nothing new. Andy, that was a great report. I liked that. Thanks.
Couple minor things. Adam, where are we with our discussions with ShopCo on recouping our tax increment contribution to that project?
So we're looking for who to reach out to at this point.
So he's no longer?
Well, that's something I still haven't been able to verify, but once we find out who we need to talk to, we'll be establishing that.
Okay. And then, secondly, I was, Craig, or maybe Maria can answer this. I was, I have a friend that lives over in the new High Point Development off East Second. And I was driving through the subdivision yesterday, which looks nice, and I just noticed the lack of boulevard trees. When does that get triggered through the process?
So that's one of the examples of the cash-in lieu of a street tree, and so as the owners occupy the lots, they contact the city, and so the developer's given us money to put into a special fund. And so when the property owner occupies their lot, they'll contact us, and we'll do an adopt-a-tree program with them. And we order those, you know, once a year, or so. Every year, they give us kind of a list, and then we order them, and then we'll plant them in the spring.
Are the owners aware of that? I mean, I know they are through probably the covenants, but...
Right, it's in the covenants, it's part of the, part of their CCNRs, so.
It just, I mean, most of those lots are now either built on or occupied, maybe not all of them, but probably 70, 75%, and I'm not seeing many street trees.
I can look into how it's being conveyed to them. It's a newer program, and so that may be one of the disconnects that we haven't been able to see yet, so.
Yeah, possibly. I'm sure it's not our fault, but my friend that does live there said he has no idea why he doesn't have trees in front of his yard.
Okay.
So.
Yeah, I'll look into it.
On that note, I have nothing further, anything further from staff? We are adjourned. Thanks.